Seven PM. All members are present, so please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, recognition of students, staff, and public. First of all, I think we're going to have Director Tom Bennett, and he's going to introduce our students.
So this is our third year of having student representatives on the board, and I'll just go ahead and introduce those students this year. First, we have returning from Jefferson, we have a senior, we have Jackson Damagala. If you want to come up here and go and introduce yourself and say a word or two.
Hi, I'm Jackson Damagala. I'm a senior at Jefferson. This is my second year on the board. I basically run the BSAC meetings, and then I attend the PAC meetings. This year, I'm just on the school board, so I can pass it on to the next year, and I'm here to be involved with the school, I guess.
Good Lord, applause for Jackson. Thank you, Jackson. The new joining us is a student representative from Kennedy, we have Ms. Ally Starks. If you want to come on up here and say a few words.
Hi, I'm Ally Starks. I'm a junior at Kennedy, and this is my first year and my first meeting. I'm here because Kennedy has such a rich narrative, and there is voices that need to be heard, and I'm here to share them with everyone. And I'm also the co-chair of the BSAC meetings with Jackson.
At this time, I'd invite Mr. Holman to come on up here, our attorney, to administer the oath of office for our new student representative.
You'll have to take the oath, and I'll phrase it, and you repeat after me. All right, would you raise your right hand? And state that I affirm that I will support
I affirm that I will support
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and of the state
and of the state.
and that I will discharge faithfully
and that I will discharge faithfully
the duties of the student representative
the duties of the student representative
to the school board
to the school board
of independent school districts
of independent school districts
number 271
number 271
Bloomington Public Schools
Bloomington Public Schools
to the best of my judgment and ability.
to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ally. Glad to have you. I'm glad to see you returning, Jackson, so thank you for both of you for serving. Moving on, Mr. Eric Melby is coming up for our Indigenous Peoples' Proclamation. Would someone like to move the resolution there first? Someone want to read the resolution? Somebody jumped.
I can do it.
I can do it.
Madam Chair, being resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached proclamation for proclaiming Monday, October 8, 2018, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Second.
Okay. I will read it first, I guess, and then we'll vote on it. So, this says Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 8, 2018. Whereas the land now known as the State of Minnesota has been home to the Indigenous Peoples since time immemorial, and without whom the building of the state would not have been possible, and whereas Indigenous Peoples have made essential contributions to the landscape of Minnesota, including traditional knowledge, experience, labor, technology, science, philosophy, industry, arts, as well as their cultural belief system that stipulates Indigenous Peoples as protectors and stewards of our natural environment for the benefit of all, and whereas Independent School District 271 joins a growing number of government entities across the country that have recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in order to promote appreciation, tolerance, reconciliation, understanding, friendship, and continued partnerships among all of its people and the Indigenous Peoples of this land. Now therefore, we, the Bloomington School Board, hereby proclaim Monday, October 8, 2018, to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in the Bloomington Public Schools. We encourage all staff, students, families, and residents to join in celebrating the collective ingenuity, creativity, cultures, and traditions of Indigenous Peoples, and continue honoring the contributions of Indigenous Peoples throughout the year. So now, we have to vote first.
Okay.
All right, so all in favor of this proclamation, please say aye.
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 Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, Chair Steigaf, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for the proclamation and recognizing this important part of our community. More importantly, I'm here to introduce a couple of people, and one in particular who has a little statement to read in regards to this proclamation. So with me, I've got Laura Wilson and her daughter Samantha, I learned Sammy, is going to read a brief statement for the board and the public.
Hello, my name is Samantha Wilson, and I am a seventh grader at Olson Middle School. I am pleased to accept this proclamation on behalf of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. This proclamation honors us and our ancestors as the original inhabitants of this land. Thank you for declaring October 8 as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
earned perfect scores on their ACTs.
Well, good evening. As principal at Jefferson High School, one of the privileges of this position is I get to show off some great students and their achievements. So I would like to have two students, who I think are both here, Emily and Jelaine, come up to the podium, please. Good. All right. Jelaine and Emily. All right. So, 1% of all students in the United States earn a perfect score on the ACT. This is the highest of distinctions in our testing and in our high school achievement, so we are extremely excited for these two young ladies. Jelaine is an 11th grader with a 4.3 GPA. She takes 4.3, yes. Honors AP courses and PSCE, has participated in choir and ballet, and currently works as a math tutor, as well as an office manager for a local lawn care company. Congratulations, Jelaine, on your achievement. Emily, a 4.042, those extra decimal points are important, GPA, has taken a significant amount of honors in AP courses, and has participated in track and field, science, Olympiad, and volleyball. And again, perfect scores in the ACT, achieved by only 1% of all students in this country. Congratulations.
You could say thanks to mom and dad for helping out.
Okay, Jason, I have to call on you again. I should tell you to stay up there, sorry. So Jason is also going to introduce a teacher that is American Geography Society Teacher Fellow.
So, along with representing great students, we have great adults in our building. So Sarah Dahl-Wyland is one of our teachers, as she comes up. And while she comes up, I'd like to make a quick plug for our PGP and Naviance tools, which houses all of our information around career and college readiness, along with school progress and achievement, which is where I found all that information on these two young ladies, so it was all in one spot, so that was very helpful. All right, Sarah. Sarah Dahl-Wyland, she's standing very far away for some reason. Social Studies teacher at Jefferson High School. She teaches debate, world history, and human geography. Longtime Bloomington Public Schools teacher, and recently earned the distinction of being named one of 50 Teacher Fellows with the American Geographical Society, which is quite an achievement for sure. So congratulations, Sarah. Please say something.
Yes, hi, thank you, Jason. So, hi, everyone. Sarah Dahl-Wyland, and I started here in Bloomington in 2000 at Jefferson, and then I taught for 14 years at Kennedy, served as a district peer coach for two years, and then now I am starting my second year back at Jefferson, so it's been kind of a full-circle moment. And what's kind of nice about this is I am the teacher who's starting the AP Human Geography Program, which is the AP class for ninth graders at Jefferson, and so as part of that, of course, doing lots of work over the summer and things. And so I heard about this opportunity, and I thought, you know, this would be a really great thing to apply for, because it would kind of, you know, launch, you know, launch me forward in terms of having some experience and being able to connect with people and so forth. And so I have extensive experience teaching AP classes, and I'm a table leader and sample selector for the AP World History exam, and so I wanted to kind of build on that, because that's taught in the 10th grade. This geography class will be taught in the ninth grade, to really create kind of a cohesive experience between those two grades. And so that's why I applied for it, so it was kind of a nice, nice bonus, obviously, to get it. What it means is, again, I'm part of a cohort for teachers for this year. We are going to a symposium that is sponsored by the AGS at Columbia, and it pulls together representatives from government, from academia, as well as from the business world. It's called Geography 2050, and it's been a multi-year symposium. The theme this year is called "Powering Our Future Planet," and so very much focused on alternative energy, GIS, other geospatial studies. And so that's obviously a pretty fantastic experience to be able to go, and I believe the keynote speaker is Senator Sheldon Whitehouse from Rhode Island, and he's very much a proponent of alternative energy, and so we'll be hearing about that. And the idea is then to be able to bring back a lot of that learning and experience to the students here in Bloomington. So, thank you for the recognition, and it'll be a great thing to share with my fellow colleagues when I get back. Thanks.
The school district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners and the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our friends of education. So I'm going to call on Julie Campagnelli to come up, and she's going to introduce our first friend this evening, Redemption Lutheran Church.
Members of the school board, superintendent Fujitaki, parents, teachers, and students, my name is Julie Campagnelli, and it is my honor as the Learning Support Specialist to introduce you to a friend, not just a friend of Bloomington Schools, but a friend of the community, Reverend Saul Grosskopf of Redemption Lutheran Church. For those of you that might not know about Redemption, it is the church that's located just north of Indian Mounds Elementary. I came to meet Mr., or Mr., sorry, Reverend Saul through the planning committee of our Jump Start event, and the Jump Start was a school supply and resource fair event that we had this past summer. We were looking for a place to hold our event, and in one of our planning meetings, one of our members says, "I know just the place that we can have it." I'm going to give a call to my old pal. And within a short period of time, we had a place to host the event. I imagine that there might have been some arm wrestling with that. You can, you know, imagine getting a call saying, you know, "We'd like to come over, and we're going to bring a thousand of our friends to come and visit in your spots." So, anyway, wow, did they do a great job hosting, and especially their staff member named Mark Borchard, who's at choir tonight, by the way, and wasn't able to attend. But they just really went out of their way to accommodate us, from providing chairs to tables, to tent weights, to sandwiches. They really made the event a very successful event. Reverend Saul even took it upon himself to walk around and give out water to all the volunteers, because it was really hot that night that we were out there. Including Redemption Lutheran, we also had seven other community members that were involved in the Jump Start to school event, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention them here. And they would include Saint Michael's Lutheran Church, the City of Bloomington, Upworks, Sheridan Story, Veep, Good in the Hood, and Cowboy Jacks. This would not have happened, really would not have happened, if it wasn't for our partners at Redemption Lutheran Church. We wouldn't have had a spot to have it, so we're incredibly grateful to that. Thank you for your generosity, your kindness, and your friendship to Bloomington Schools. Please welcome Reverend Saul and Redemption Lutheran Church.
Thank you. It's a real honor and privilege to be here and work with the organizations involved. We were able to supply over 925 students for the fall. So I'm reminded of a quote from Mother Teresa, who said, "There are some things I can do better than you, there are some things you can do better than me, but together, we can do great things." Thank you.
Next, Director Maureen Bartolata is going to introduce Companies to Classroom.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to reintroduce everyone to Carrie Weatherby, who started Companies to Classrooms. Companies to Classrooms was a nonprofit organization that provided a way for local businesses to support education in their community by donating excess supplies and inventories for use in the Bloomington Public Schools, as well as private and parochial schools here in Bloomington. Richfield, Shakopee, Robinsdale, Brooklyn Center, Hopkins, St. Louis Park, Edina, and Eden Prairie were also included. Founded 12 years ago by Carrie Weatherby, Companies to Classrooms will be closing its door on September 30. On behalf of the school board and the district, we want to thank Carrie for all of her hard work and commitment to supporting our staff and our students through those wonderful, successful years. And on a personal note, I personally served on the board of directors for the past few years, and I was honored to do such. So, I'd like to introduce Carrie Weatherby to say a few words.
Well, thank you. I didn't necessarily need to thank you. I'm very saddened that Companies to Classrooms will not be continuing. We had an increase in operating expenses that we could not cover, but we are very proud that for the last 12 years, we've distributed $4 million worth of supplies into schools. And I'm very hopeful that somebody will take the place, because teachers need the support, because there's more and more needy children coming into the school districts, and they're always the last line of defense. They're the ones that supply the items that the kids need to learn. And I'm hopeful that something will come to support them. I feel like educators are the most dedicated professionals around. I've witnessed it firsthand. I thank you very much for thanking me, but I want to thank the educators and offer my sincere condolences that I cannot continue to do this for them, but thank you.
Do we have any students here for their government classes? Okay. Then I have a little statement I have to read, okay? So, "A requirement our 12th grade government classes to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Themes that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, etc. The social studies curriculum guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation." So now, I'd like to have each of you come up to the podium and give your name, the school you're attending, and your teacher's name, please. And then, after the meeting, or eight o'clock, which refers after one hour, you can get your agenda signed by the people that sit over here along the wall. You can stay till the end if you like, but I think your requirement is one hour. So come on up, introduce yourselves.
My teacher is Mr. Sterling, Jefferson High School.
My name is Julianne Collins, and I'm also a senior, and I go to Jefferson, and I am also in Mr. Sterling's class.
I'm Erin Baddo. I go to Jefferson, and I'm in Mr. Sterling's class as well.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to address the school board on an item not on the agenda? Okay, I see no one, so moving on, is there a motion to approve Part A of the agenda?
So moved.
Madam Chair. Oh, sorry, I forgot the students, I got it. Sorry, okay, which one of you guys wanted to go first? I figured, okay.
I'll start. Okay. I'm Jackson Damagala for Jefferson. This is the first report of the year. It started the school year, it started quite smooth with a new cafeteria, updated classrooms, as well as a new flag hall. The building has new spaces for students, and they can feel pride with the new facilities and furniture. Bloomington online classes are off to a very strong start. Personally, I have two of them, and I'm able to enjoy them in the new cafeteria with the new furniture. Also, in Jefferson news, the Jefferson Theater Company will perform The Mousetrap at 7:00 PM, September 27th to 29th, in the auditorium. As was already mentioned in the meeting, Sarah Dahl-Wyland has been named a 2018 American Geography Society Teacher Fellow. She's only 50 out in the whole country. Jefferson's open house was rescheduled to Tuesday, so tomorrow, since we had a little problem. Last Friday, Bloomington Jefferson High School inducted seven new members, they did it at the football game, for the Athletics Hall of Fame. That includes Cole Aldridge, Justin Hall, Luke McLean, Wayne Mandery, and Kim Robinson, and Christina Sheridan, and Duncan Soucy. Sixteeners from Bloomington Jefferson and Kennedy schools have been named semifinalists in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program, which is always great to hear. And Homecoming Week is the next week, and we'll have Spirit Week throughout the week. I don't know exactly what it is yet, but on Saturday, we'll have the Homecoming Dance at Jefferson. Before this meeting, we also had our first BSAC meeting, run by Ally and I. It was very productive. We have a stronger attendance than we did last year from both schools, and we were able to discuss on some projects that may unite both Kennedy and Jefferson. So that's Jefferson so far this year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ally. I'm Kennedy's representative, and I'm a junior this year. So this year, Kennedy's really been pushing our support in getting the word out for our career in College Center. So many high school students believe that the only way to succeed past high school is a traditional four-year college degree, and in this day and age, that's just not true anymore. We believe that finding our interests and possibly our career really can help us, guide us, to whatever it may be, whether it be trade school or technical college, or even that traditional four-year degree. So we had our lettering ceremony and breakfast for the 2017-2018 school year, where 323 sophomores, juniors, and seniors were recognized at our ceremony. The 3.5 Club, as we call it, for getting a 3.5 GPA, also received a sports pass for free admission into all sporting events for the school year. On October 5, Kennedy will be hosting a blood drive open to students ages 16-plus, along with their parents and community members. And this week, it's Homecoming Week, which is a huge deal for us, and we're all super excited. Our themes for Spirit Week were voted on by students, and Meme Day, along with Jersey Day, are among my personal favorites. This year's theme for the dance is Let's Glow Crazy, which is a glow theme, black lights, and, which is similar to last year's Glow Coming, where we sold a record over 500 tickets. And this year, the Eagles sports team will take on the Jefferson Jaguars throughout the week, where we have our Homecoming Football Game on Friday. Tomorrow is All Conference for Choir, Band, and Orchestra, which is the top musicians from each of those groups. And our little spotlight this week was Jillian Ziebo became the first female to score points for our Kennedy football team. Our school is more than proud of her, and she's our kicker, and she's one of the best on the team, and it's a huge triumph for women here at Kennedy.
All right, thank you. Just for the people that don't know, the rest of us do reports at the end, but we try to be mindful that our students may have other things that they need to finish at night, so if we go too long, we like to have their reports at the beginning, so that they can get out of here and not have to wait to do their report. So, all right, so now, moving on to, would anyone like to make a motion to approve Part A of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of approving Part A of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
On the post. Okay, then we're moving on to Part B, and I think Mr. Rod Zikovic is up with the proposed 2018 payable 2019 property tax levy.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the property tax levy for the proposed 2018 payable 2019 levy of $59,581,969. Be it further resolved that in the event of any changes to the levy amounts by the Minnesota Department of Education, it is the intent of the School Board of Independent School District 271 to levy the appropriate amount as allowed by law. The state requires that the district use the term maximum on the certification sheet to allow these corrections to the levy.
Second.
Chair Steigaf, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, this is the process to start the budgeting year. What we do is, we, the board has the approval of the original preliminary levy, which then goes to the county to prepare the property taxes for the next year. And then we come back in December with a full presentation of our property tax process, our levy, and the board makes a final approval at that point in time. As you can see from the resolution, in the background of the resolution... As you can see from the resolution, in the background of the resolution, we're showing a 4.5% increase overall in the levy. 4.5 is on the referendum piece, which was approved by voters. And that is basically on increased enrollment and the inflationary increases. The second part of the levy is the other categories. And the largest increase on there is also with our capital projects. There's an increase within capital projects based on the inflationary pieces.
Questions, anyone? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have John Weiser for Next Technologies for Learning update. And I think he has a whole team to introduce.
Good evening, Chair Staioff, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. I'm here tonight with the Digital Learning Team to give you an update on NTL, Next Technologies for Learning. I get to give you the history lesson and then I'll pass it down the line here. You should note that there's no board action needed in tonight's presentation, but we always appreciate your questions and feedback. The Next Technologies for Learning started with the 2013 Safe and Innovative Schools referendum. We are five years, believe it or not, five years into that referendum, so time goes pretty quickly. We started and maintained this mission statement around Next Technologies for Learning, to personalize learning to support students along their pathways to career and college readiness. So, we try to tie back everything we do, the strategic decisions we make, back to getting better and better personalization for our students. If you've seen us present before, you've seen that NTL has three components: digital content, anytime, anywhere learning, and personalized data. Those are the three main areas that we center around. We do a lot of stuff under the NTL umbrella, so I wanted just to take a moment to recognize that these are ongoing projects. At different times in the past five years, we presented whole sessions on some of these efforts and I don't want to let them go unnoticed. We moved, we helped move this district to be a one-to-one district over a three-year period, starting in 2013. With that, we made a decision that at the time created a lot of discussion about guaranteeing internet access for our students. As we move toward a digital curriculum and as we stretch the boundaries of classroom, it's on us to also ensure that students have access, internet access, when they leave school. We personalize data through continued growth of the hub. On the instructional side, the Flex Cohort, it's been, the name of it's been changed over time. It was the Flipped Cohort at one time. Now, it's called the Flex and Student-Centered Cohort. This is the area where we support teachers, over 150 teachers this year in stretching their instruction in areas of time, place, path, and pace to better personalize for students. Every year, we give a student survey and that student survey shows growth in the use of technology toward meeting students' learning goals. Most recently, last year, we reported, our team reported, and we had Jason and his group, as well as the Kennedy folks, here to talk about Flex Spaces. So, I wanted to give you a quick update there before I hand off to Holly. Three big projects this summer that were completed. You heard Jackson talk about the Jefferson upgrades. The lunchrooms at both high schools got a makeover through the help of the Facilities Program, Rod's team. If you walk through those buildings today on any given day, it's not just lunch that's happening there. It's also a lot of the students who are taking online learning courses and just being creative about how they use that space. Also, this last summer was Ridge Views turned for alt facilities remodel. And so, here are the pictures you see are two classrooms that were connected with the glass wall to provide greater collaboration for those two groups, for those two classes of students. And then, whenever we do these remodels, we try to take advantage of, the walls are coming down. Let's look at all these spaces. Our environments are changing to match our changing instructional strategies. So, let's look at the nooks and crannies around a school. And so, those other pictures there are small spaces inside of Ridge View that have been turned into collaborative spaces for our students there. If you get a chance, even if Ridge View's not your school to go to, just walk through sometime during the day. It's kind of impressive to see some of these spaces in use. In 1819, in addition to doing all of that ongoing work, maintaining all of that good past work, we are focusing on three strategic areas. We're adding energy and attention in three efforts. One called Balanced Technology Choices. Holly Skatsim, Digital Learning Coordinator for Elementary, will talk about that effort. Additional teacher support, Katrina Mesra, we'll talk about that. And our venture into online learning. And Karen Qualley, Digital Learning Coordinator at the secondary level, will talk through those efforts. Holly.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about balanced technology in Bloomington. Coming, how we got here is we had quite a few advisories last year and workgroups from different areas, a middle school workgroup, a parent engagement workgroup. John is on the district school board advisory, correct? And out of some of those groups, we're hearing some feedback from those different groups of people that they would appreciate us to think about technology and all the aspects of it and all the different ways we might use it. And with it, with the great things that come with it, are we talking about some of the challenges? And so, that's balanced tech choices. So, I'm going to start by just going through a few belief statements that we've put together as a digital learning team. And these belief statements will be shared widely across the district with our teachers, our staff, our students, and our parents. So, first, "We are committed to helping students, staff, and families minimize the negative and maximize the positive impacts of technology." So, we are recognizing again that there are so many great things about technology, but there are some challenges and we're going to really be committed to helping our students, staff, and families minimize those. The next thing is that we believe there is value in the balanced use of technology in the classroom and beyond. So, how are we supporting all those different groups of people as they're using technology at school, at home, and in the classrooms? So, to that, we have three main audiences coming out of Balanced Tech Choices. And those three audiences are our students, our families, and our teachers and staff. So, for our students, we're going to be working on ways to teach them healthy tech habits and encouraging self-assessment of that use. So, you're going to see things like student self-assessment tools and some activities that teachers can pull and use as they're feeling like students in their classroom might need to pause, take a break, and self-assess their use of technology. So, we'll be looking for some ways to integrate that in through our instruction and through our different classes throughout the day for our students. I'm going to go back to that one just a minute. Last spring, the school board approved the media standards. And the media standards have a lot of this work embedded in them as well. And so, those standards will be taught all year long by our media directors and tech integrationists. And so, some of that work for our students will be coming through those standards in that instruction piece. The next audience is our teachers and staff. We're helping our staff use a balanced approach to technology while providing those student-centered learning opportunities. So, John brought back up the mission of NTL, which is to personalize learning for our students using technology. And I'm going to move to Katrina in a bit and she's going to talk about how we are specifically supporting teachers this year in doing this type of work. And then, our third audience are those families. So, how are we helping our families when this technology goes home? How are we helping and supporting them and using that in the homes? What resources are we providing them and how is that getting to them? So, you'll see next, this Thursday, this Thursday already, that there's going to be a tech tip going home to families through all the social media channels on the Bloomington website. And the first tech tip that's going home to families is a plan to create a family media plan at home. So, it's walking them through the steps it would take to create a family media plan and putting those expectations into place in the home. And every month after, we'll be sending other tech tips home that are really pertinent to families with the technology in the home, getting them that information. So, Balanced Tech Choices is really a focus on those three areas: our students, our teachers and staff, and our families, and making sure we're supporting them while we maximize the positive technology, but also support them in the challenges that can come about with the technology.
I'm going to talk a little bit about teacher support, which is another focus of ours throughout the year. So, Holly just spoke about Balanced Tech Choices and how important that is to keeping technology, kind of maximizing the positive role it can have. And so, one of the themes that emerged throughout last year from two different sources was just how important it is to continue, after a one-to-one implementation, to continue supporting our teachers and their instructional practice. And so, one of the ways that came up was just through feedback, through multiple channels, through our gate advisory, for example. We're looking at what's next for Next Technologies for Learning, right? You know, we've done this sort of first five years, what's next? And that group kind of strongly said, "We're not looking for the next big thing. We're not looking for necessarily like new technology or a different saturation level in our classrooms. We're really looking for how do we use it better and better and better." And to do that, teachers need support. And then, you know, other places as well, superintendent's advisory, as well as, you know, it just came out lots of places that there's still more for our teachers to learn because there's always more to learn, right? And then, research as well. We've been following some of the, like, for example, Project RED is one of the big one-to-one studies that's been going on for quite a few years now. And one of the things that they continue to point back to is job-embedded support for our professionals who continue to learn and grow and learn new skills and apply technology in new ways. So, we're doing, we're looking for two big things here in supporting our teachers. Not that we haven't before, but we're really just trying to double down on the effort and the resources that we put towards it. Two big areas. One is that, I call it sometimes, the rapidly changing world support. We all know that, you know, sometimes your operating system will update and then it looks different, right? Our tools change in technology. That's just the reality of the world we live in. And so, our teachers are going through that too and they're going through it live and on the stage of a classroom. And we want to make sure that they have all the support they need in order to use the tools to do their job, which is helping students. And so, really making sure that they have that skill support, but then also looking at how does that, those skills get applied to learning? So, looking at tech integration and continuing to look at new innovative ways that really help students learn. So, that looks, we're doing that in a few major ways. One is we've had, we've had for years, a great teacher support system through our media director and our tech integrationists at the high school. They've done a great job and we're continuing to work with them throughout this year and go all-in on supporting our teachers and looking at the most effective ways to do that. How do we do that in the most meaningful ways? So, we're teaming on that. And then, we also have great partners across the district. So, we recently met with our coaching friends from Q Comp Literacy, as well as EL, to make sure that the things that we're helping teachers learn go together. So, for example, if an EL strategy is talking about lots of oral language practice, for example, how does technology support and/or hinder that, right? Going along with what Holly was talking about, making sure that our messages and our strategies all align for the good of our kiddos. And then, in addition, we've added some staff. So, we have two district-wide TOSSAs working on our team. They're each assigned to five schools to provide additional support alongside that media director or tech integrationist at the site. And then, five schools are piloting added, some added partial FTEs for the media director. And then, some of their more administrative role has gone to somebody else so that that media director can spend the bulk of their time working on teacher support.
My name's Karen Qualley and I'm providing an update on online learning in Bloomington. I've been fortunate to work with a growing cohort of teachers as they prepare to design and teach online courses. That group is now up to 30 teachers who are learning the skills and the pedagogies for best practices in online learning. It's an area of growth. Our courses have been live and with students in them for four weeks. And so, we're very excited to collect that feedback and continue to iterate and improve our skills. Ultimately, the goal of our courses are to make sure that we're creating and designing interactive and dynamic learning experiences for our students. That it's not merely a quiz or discussion forum course, but that it's really an engaging process that involves both our students communicating peer-to-peer and with our teachers. Some of the feedback has been really great. We haven't collected it formally yet at this point. We do plan to at the end of the trimester. But it's been a benefit for us just to hear from some of the students who have taken online courses elsewhere, that they're finding high levels of satisfaction with our courses. Including Jackson. And a little bit of that timeline, we've met years previous to just last year, but we've met to design an advisory group that would talk about our mission and what we really want from that online learning experience. We currently have an advisory team that solves problems as they arise and keeps that communication going, not only with our online teachers, but the larger high school staff. So, last year, we designed 11 courses, which means this fall, we are now teaching 60 sections of online learning here in Bloomington, designed by Bloomington teachers, taught by our teachers. We're looking forward to designing 10 new courses, again, to offer some new selections in the fall of next year. And with that comes some projected growth, imagining that those section numbers will continue to rise and that we'll continue to design new courses that meet the needs of our students and our staff.
So, we'd like to end any presentation with the acknowledgement that it's not just us doing this work. Really, it takes a team effort, as you know. These are just some of the partners and groups that we work with. You know, I don't walk into a meeting and usually it's a collaboration between a lot of different groups. It's rarely just this team that's doing the heavy lifting. So, again, many thanks to everybody on this slide, plus everybody else who's participating in these efforts to do better for our students. With that, what kind of questions or feedback would you have?
Madam Chair, just a quick one, if I may. First, Karen, Christina, Holly, John, thanks for coming. I'm sorry. I have two questions. And it just dawned on me that I think we have, because of the students we have here, I might be able to find an answer from them. The first question is, what do the students think of the changes over the years? And what do the teachers think? Anytime we say, "Go ahead, make these changes, do the magic that you do," right? There's learning curves. You said that, hey, my homepage looks different. How do I navigate it, right? So, I'm curious to know, we have two student board reps at the table and maybe I could ask the first half of that question to the students. What do you think of the changes? Do you like the Flex Space? Do you like what you're seeing? And then, the second half of the question would be, how are our teachers responding to this? What, I know you had some feedback, but any more you could give me, that'd be awesome. So, students, teachers, who wants to go first?
There you go. All right, so I have a class in NSO for physics and then I have a regular class through Bloomington English class. And for NSO, the difference is that they give me the whole course right away. And for online, they give me a week at a time. The good part of also having online at Jefferson, though, is that my teacher was able to call me in for academic seminar. And so, I got to meet her in person for that time and I can ask questions about the course of that week. That was a good time, but also I enjoy the NSO of having your course all there at the same time. So, you're able, if you want to just grind all of it out. But then, there could be procrastination. You just wait to like the last two weeks, I guess, to do it all. So, that's all I have to say about the online courses, other than the cafeteria being nice and the new Flex Spaces and the glass walls in the media center.
Yeah, I'm taking online gym right now, which is, but it's amazing how I'm able to fit that. I have such a packed schedule and with such rigid hours, like my schedules can't change throughout the trimesters. And to be able to fit gym and I don't have to be at school all sweaty and I can use my volleyball practices as my gym class is beyond like amazing for me because I work out two, three hours a day, every day. And to have that not count is frustrating. And being able to count that in my gym class is, has been so amazing for me. And I love it. And I get lots of emails from my teachers, so I remember, remember to do it.
I'll take the rest of your question, Dick, and then other people can chime in. One of the things, so the other two audiences we're talking about are... One of the things, so the other two audiences we're talking about are the adults in the system, staff, teachers and support staff, and then as well as parents. And, you know, a lot of the pressure moving forward comes from our parents in the community. When we started this 2013 referendum, it started with a big feedback session led by the Community Relations Office, which produced, I don't know, 60 or 70 pages of feedback from the community that said, please create a more modern system that helps prepare our kids for the current, our current workforce, our current society. And so that, a lot of what we do is informed by that initial feedback. We talked about that time, and we continue to talk about every new effort that we put forward as having a soft landing. That is, adults in the system often are most burdened when they don't have stability in the system or that the, the system seems to change every year. We change the system, and we change another system, and we change another system. Some of those things happen to us, like some of our data systems that are unavoidable. That has to be factored in. But when we try to move the system forward, we try to do it in a very supportive effort. We call that a soft landing. Doesn't mean there isn't some anxiety in the system around any of these changes, but we try to take care of people as best we can. That's why we're focusing on that, that teacher support area and the student support area.
Kind of fun to have the students right here to
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't prompt them at all.
Of course, you never know, never know what they're going to say, right?
Corman gets the next question here.
Yes, thank you. I do have two or three questions. So the first one is in relation to the devices. Can you please remind us a little bit, and also for the public to be informed of how the one-on-one device is working and what's different between elementary school, middle school, and high school?
So we started with a one-to-one rollout of Chromebooks in middle school, and then the following year went to one-to-one Chromebooks at the high school level. And then our third year rollout was one-to-one Chromebooks as well at third grade through fifth grade. So that makes us one-to-one 312 with the same device, which is nice, very consistent for our students. And so that kind of makes that part of it invisible. And then our early childhood through second grade is at a one-to-three ratio of iPads, a little more touch-friendly device, and just finding that they weren't using it as often. So they more often team up. Some schools have decided to use additional funds, building funds, et cetera, to up those ratios at the, at the early childhood through second grade level. So some places are more like a one-to-one, but our district standard is one-to-three.
Okay. So I understand that we do have some students who, or I don't know if this is happening for all students, maybe you can clarify that, that are now taking the devices home on the weekends, right? Fridays. So if that's the case, then does that mean then that we're not sending homework on the, on those days during the weekends? And what happens if, well, we're maybe assuming that kids have a different device at home, but what happens if we have students who don't have that device and need to study for a future test?
So we have what, what we would call a loose tight relationship with the way devices are practically implemented within a school. And so we do have schools who've decided as a part of their homework policy that homework is not, doesn't take place over the weekend, therefore you don't need the supporting device over the weekend. The two, the two are linked together typically. And then we emphasize with our schools that no matter what your, your all rule is, your blanket rule is, you always need to make room for exceptions. For, as you say, like, somebody who's studying for something outside of that norm of, yeah, but I'm going on, but I will be away next week, and, or I'm making up work, I need to do this. So we ask our, the professionals we have in the building to create those accommodations for students who, who have needs beyond that plain blanket policy for a school.
Because I would be more concerned with the students that maybe like to study during this time of the week when they actually have a little bit more free time for future testing. That would be my only concern, you know, that you don't get that opportunity if you don't have a device at home. So that, I'm just letting you know that. So the second one is, can you talk a little bit more about in terms of professional development in, in relation to technology for our teachers? You know, I have had experience working in school districts where, or one school district in particular where technology, you know, is the big deal. And the amount of training that comes with that, it's very intense. Can you kind of give me a little bit of idea of how this is being managed at, in Bloomington? If you have, if, if you can give me more of a number of, you know, how many hours are the, the teachers taking to be part of this kind of training? Because it's constant training. And in the time that it's been taking for this, you know, is this within, I mean, how, when do they get the time to be part of the, of the PD for technology?
So I think in terms of the technology integration, where we've been one-to-one at elementary now for, is this our third year or second year? Third year? So I think at this point, you would find more often than not that it's just become a regular part of teachers' day-to-day teaming and their PLCs and their work. It's rare that you might walk into a classroom and talk to a group of teachers and have them say, like, I'm still struggling with how to use this technology in my classroom. I think we're far enough along now where it's more just talking about how are we continuing to make it better. So in Bloomington, we have the RAT framework. It's a tool that we use with our teachers for them to reflect on their technology integration. And our media and tech integrationists at each building have training in that tool as well. And so this year with our teacher support model, we're really helping our media and tech find those ways to push into classrooms and support with teachers, whether it's co-teaching, or maybe they do like some planning on prep together and they teach that lesson together, or the tech integrationist might observe the lesson and give the teachers feedback. So we're trying to find ways where that support is embedded in the school day for teachers versus them having to step out of their classroom to get it, or before school or after school or whatever it is. We try, we're trying as much as we can with this new teacher support model and those pilots at the buildings to embed that into teachers' days and make it very fluent and fluid and part of their day-to-day work. So that's one piece of it. The second piece that John mentioned that we didn't dig into deeply was the student-centered cohort. So we have 150 teachers at the elementary level at the, in that cohort, and then another chunk of teachers at the secondary level. And the cohort would be in addition to what I just described. So the embedded PD is for all teachers. The cohort is for teachers that want to maybe do a little bit more. They want more support or more resources in the area of tech integration. And so with that cohort, we're really focused on student-centered learning and teaching strategies. And we're digging into what student-centered means with teachers, having them select a component of student-centered learning, and with their team, set a goal to implement that throughout the year with technology to support that goal. So it's kind of two-tiered. We have the what we're doing for all, and then we have what we're doing for those that elect into it.
Yeah, I love working, you know, with technology. I know it's a great tool, and it's, it's beneficial for the students, too. It just can get a little bit overwhelming, too, if we don't, you know.
Yeah. And then Director Corman, I would just add that during workshop week, which it, it seems like it was yesterday, but it was really three weeks ago, right? We had two hours blocked at every school for teachers to set up, do, do just that nuts and bolts of setting up for the year around technology. So please, principals, make time on your back-to-week, back-to-school calendar so that teachers have this unbooked time to do that setup with the support, as Holly said, of your media director, tech integration specialist.
Thank you.
Director Bartolongo, do you have a question?
Mine's just a simple question. But, and I probably should know this. What does the acronym NSO stand for?
Northern Star Online.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, as long as you gave me that prompt.
Yes.
This is, I was checking to see if Jason Anderson was still in the room. He sent an email just today giving us an update of the status at Jefferson, really saying how successful the online courses were, that he's, he's observing. He says, one of the goals was to stem this, this choice of families and students taking NSO courses for online FIED, for instance, or for other required courses to get flexibility in their schedule or for things we don't offer. Jason reports just today, we went from 253 Northern Star credits in trimester one last year to 39 trimester credits this year. And why those 39? The majority of those students who still have to take an NSO class took the class because it's not something we offer yet. So gives us our next round of, of work to do. So that, that's a testament to his staff presenting and letting families and students know about these offerings, and then our students and families trusting that we can provide good quality online learning for them.
So I feel like many teachers still rely on the paper pencil, the very traditional means of, whether it be, shoot, I'm at a loss for words, a packet or just a worksheet. So how are you, how do you like encourage teachers to like kind of move more towards Google Classroom and the hub and all that stuff, rather than like taking all their class work on paper pencil stuff?
Question.
I think that's, that's a big question. One of the things I would point to is balance sus of tech. We don't necessarily say that because it's paper pencil, it'd be better served on technology. Sometimes there's advantages, sometimes not. So sometimes teachers are making deliberate choices, and that's, that's their prerogative, right? And so that's, that's kind of one scenario. Another is they don't yet feel comfortable with an alternative or yet see that alternative. And that's really where job embedded coaching, as well as a PLC model, where they're kind of working closely with their colleagues and learning from them and kind of getting new ideas introduced there. And then kind of having the support and the time to step out and say like, yep, I think I'm going to try that new thing. So it's definitely an ongoing conversation. So it kind of depends on why paper pencil?
Oh, you already had a turn, so.
No, I'll go for my turn down here.
Start with Director Beebe.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you're doing on this because it is, you know, evolving very quickly. And it's hard, I'm even sure for those of you well-versed in it, to keep up with it. I'm wanting to know how you make sure that a student's home has internet access?
We ask. I mean, not to be flippant, but you know, we, we do ask in a, in a yearly survey and, and identify students. We don't kind of say, do you have internet? We talk about, can you do these things at home with internet, especially for our younger learners? They don't always necessarily know what that is, although third graders are getting pretty savvy. So we do ask them flat out. And then we ask for help from our teachers. Our teachers will often be the first line to say like, looks like this student needs some help getting connected. And then refer them to the media center to check out a hotspot. And then there's a kind of a system that takes over from there. You can have a hotspot for now. Do you know about some of the more permanent options? Like some of our partners that offer $10 a month internet, for example, if that's something that's doable for your family. And so it's kind of a referral system.
Yeah. I've worked with some low-income people, and, you know, they're told, well, you have to purchase the modem, and they can't afford the modem.
Sure.
Do you help scholarship anything like that?
We don't. Our, our, our sort of last, our cover-all solution is to use a Wi-Fi hotspot that gets cellular internet. We find that that's very effective because it can be temporary or a little bit more long-term. It works regardless of your apartment building. We know that some of our apartment buildings, the only kind of internet you can get is through a certain company and, or, you know, whatever that might be. And so that's easily checked out from the media center. And so I monitor their levels all year and make sure that no one's got a waiting list. If someone has a waiting list, we look at moving our resources around. We have about enough of those to cover about 3.5% of our families. And our internet measure, last measure was at about 2.8%.
Oh, great.
And so we have the resources. The biggest challenge is for sure getting them to the right kids.
Right.
And so that's where we really depend on our staff to kind of be on the lookout and make sure our, our students have what they need.
Great. Thank you.
Director Swar.
I'm interested in the online approach. You can't help watch television and see all the different universities and schools, everything else that says, can join us. You know, it's really cheap. It could be online courses and so forth like that. And I know, so how is our marketing really going with both high schools in order to promote more designing classes, teaching the sections and so forth like that? Is there a real strong effort? Are we just going slow to make sure we're doing it right, rather than some of these companies have millions of dollars that they're just dumping into whatever it is? And I know my son has taken some college courses online, and he says they were a waste of his valuable money, just because, you know, it didn't work out. So are we meeting all of those plans, standards and so forth?
Yeah. So it's been a combination of factors that help us determine growth. Initially, in part, it's sort of a market choice for students to take courses outside of Bloomington. And so that was one of the first things that put on our radar, a need for creating our own courses. And it's great to hear John's report from Jason today about some of that credit recovery that we're getting back into our system. Beyond that, our growth, we really do intend for it to be when teachers are ready and based on our students' needs in Bloomington, and doing that specific to our Bloomington students. So again, looking at where they have been taking online courses and trying to fill from there. But we also look at what are the things that provide more flexibility in the student's schedule if we were to offer a certain amount of electives? Or some of the things we haven't considered yet are, are we offering courses to ninth graders? And so it's really about fitting the needs of our system and growing at that pace, and then budgeting accordingly to meet those needs.
And the, I remember when it first started, we had hybrid classes, you know, and those were pretty successful at the time, whether or not we still have them. But at the same time, do we need more teachers doing this? Or is it pretty much an in-house program that they develop as they go along? Some teachers are probably more excited about doing it than others. But at the same time, then is there any additional staffing that's needed in order to really meet the needs?
So every, people who are teaching currently, course writers and such, have, have opted in and, and understanding that it's a growth opportunity for them as well, picking up the skills and those practices to improve their course. So when a teacher volunteers to write a course, they're not just actually writing the course and letting it go. They continue in a cohort where now that we have students enrolled in the courses, we can see and adjust what those best practices are. And we imagine that it'll continue to be an iterative and supported process for those teachers. But as you see, section numbers increasing and courses being offered by enlisting more designers of those courses, we're up to 30 teachers right now who are involved in this online cohort. I could imagine projected growth.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, go ahead.
No.
I just was going to follow up a little bit on the families that are, are learning. All too often, we see students in EL classes are really learning well, but the parents and the family aren't. And so to take this oral learning, or whatever the concept is, home so that they can learn with their students. And it's, it's really difficult. I have some friends that are just struggling, and yet the kids are doing well. And yet they sometimes, parents are maybe embarrassed or shy or whatever it might be to have to sit down and learn, you know, from the kids' computers or whatever it is. And our community education has just tremendous number of volunteers working with them as the students come in. They practice reading, they, they read and they write. And all the volunteers are working. When I was over there the other day, talking to a fellow, he just said, this is the greatest thing to happen to me. I can finally learn how to read English, you know? And so it was going to help him in his job search and some of the other things like that, too. So there's the need, but it's just getting, you know, the word out and having it be accepted by, I think, because a lot of the families are still hesitant.
Maybe not being our primary goals to help support a parent who's struggling with a language, but we do hear anecdotally that stretching the boundaries of where coursework gets done and providing more interactive digital content, like a video versus a piece of paper, creates more opportunities for families and kids to join together. And so you, we hear about those anecdotal stories of where homework is now, you know, it's a mother-son experience instead of like go to your room and do your homework. So it's encouraging, again, not in our primary, but I, but we all are trying to, you know, help kids as a whole community.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have another question?
Okay. So just a little follow-up on what Ally said.
So, just a little follow-up on what Ally said before, in reference to the teachers and how we're supporting them with technology. Do we have access, or do they have access to resources outside of the district, like additional programs or apps that they can use in the classroom as teaching tools? Like, do we buy extra stuff from outside that we can have for the teachers, and also for the students to kind of, you know, to make movies, to recreate things, to do a whole bunch of different things for academic purposes?
The core suite of tools, you know, we can't support everything and have every teacher learn all the things on the internet, because that's a lot. And so, we really focus on a core suite of tools. Google is kind of our productivity and creation suite, and then Moodle is our LMS, and then the hub for communication and posting, and posting. And then, we've recently adopted CSAT at the elementary level, as well as Flipgrid at the high school level. So, those are sort of our core tools that we're starting to, or that we support, and we want to make sure that all teachers have the opportunity to use them as they see fit. And then, of course, we, you know, we don't prevent teachers from using all of the myriad of other resources that are out there. And so, while we don't necessarily fund them or support them, we'll certainly help them if that's what they feel like is the best tool for their learners, and, you know, we don't stop them, but we.
And so, just one last comment, and you know, initially it was a question, but I'll just make it into a comment. The importance of supporting our students, the students who are new in the district and don't come with the same technology experience, and also our immigrant students, especially, you know, the newcomers, the ones that are coming and they don't speak the language, you know, that importance of supporting them, because I know by experience that a lot of those students get completely lost in class, as everybody keeps moving, and it moves so fast and so fast, and then they get behind, just trying to get to Google Document. How do I do that? You know, just those very little basic things, you know, that, always keeping that in mind as you continuously communicate with administration of how important it is to continue to support all of our students. And the other comment is in reference to the opportunities, the online opportunities that students have, if we can continue to keep an eye on administration, keep an eye on, you know, who is taking advantage of those opportunities? Because as we know, our successful students always are able to find those opportunities, and they take advantage of those. That might not be the case with some of our other students. So, are we seeing all different groups of students using those kind of tools? Are they being part of it? Do they know that they can take those classes, and are they being encouraged to do it as well? So, just a reminder, you know, constantly, you know, as we make progress towards technology, that we cannot forget those little things that will be helpful for our kids. Thank you.
Great, I appreciate your comments. The learning and teaching team, we just had a meeting today about digital content and the shift over these last five years toward digital content. And it's on my work list to look at who's taking online courses, because the design of, as Karen talked about, Karen's advisory of, this is not, this is a delivery tool. Online is a delivery tool. It's not another opportunity for AP students to take, to get farther ahead. It really is a different opportunity for all of our students. So, we should see representation by our special ed students, our EL students.
Yes, thank you.
I can follow up with the data around that as well. Thank you very much for having us.
Okay, Director Kerman.
Just one last question.
Yeah.
So, education seems to be a world that's packed full of acronyms, and I saw, I saw one in your presentation, you don't have to go back to it, for Mr. Starlane's students who are here tonight, and the many that are watching us online. Can you help me understand what a TOSA is?
Sure, that is a Teacher on Special Assignment. So, a TOSA is someone, is a teacher who is a teacher by trade, and they are doing something usually outside of a classroom temporarily.
How long is the temporary? Is it?
Three to five years is typical.
All right, so if the student saw a teacher that was in the classroom, and then they got this wonderful new assignment, it's a TOSA. That's, now you learned an acronym. Now, you can go back and tell your teacher that you learned something tonight.
Sarah Dahl-Wiland was a TOSA.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board member reports. Who would like to go first?
All right, I'll go.
He always gets to start. Nobody else wants to start, I guess.
Got some shy board members. I'll go quick. Last week, 917 Intermediate 917 had an open house for their Cedar Building. It's over in Inver Grove Heights. This was a remodeled, I believe it was a Cub Food Store, but it was a lot of space, and essentially, we started with four healthy walls and a healthy roof. And then, we remodeled that into classrooms. This is primarily our special ed programming for Intermediate 917. It was really nice to meet the staff. I met the gym teacher, the principal, some of the front office staff, the reception area, and just got a tour. Believe it or not, I wandered away from my tour guide and got lost, and one of my coworkers came and got me, felt sorry for me, and I was locked into a room somewhere. But it was, it's really nice to see that the attention to detail, the effort and the energy that went into that particular building. And we're looking forward to serving students at a full capacity soon. Ally had mentioned that the academic lettering ceremony over at Kennedy last week, was it? Yeah, last week, because today's Monday. Anyways, the students that have a 3.5 GPA or higher get a letter, and it's really neat to see, you know, you're used to seeing sports, sports letters, sports, 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 and it's neat to see that it's okay to be smart, and that it's a good thing to be smart, and that it's recognized. There's a lot of hard work that goes into maintaining a 3.5 GPA. And every single one of the students you had mentioned, the number Ally, three hundred and?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Three hundred and twenty-three students managed to do that. And it was nice to see, I would, I'm gonna say, the majority of those students were there. There was a mom or dad, or a caregiver, somebody was there to support those students. So, it's always fun to go to those particular ceremonies and just listen and learn. We went for donuts and coffee and juice in the remodeled cafeteria, which was air-conditioned, which is a nice change. It's just nice to see that the students are being recognized for academic achievements. Also, just on my last note here, it's nice to see so many district people, the schools, district offices, and organizations participate in the Heritage Days Parade. That was last Saturday, it was the fifteenth, it's usually the third Saturday of the month. And I know we ordered good weather, but we did not. I promise we didn't order hot and sticky, but that's what we got. So, it was really nice to see so many people. They were smiling at the beginning, they were smiling in the middle, and they were smiling at the end. So, appreciate all the effort and the interest that went into making the floats and the different pieces that made up all the different schools. So, all in there.
Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Director Beebe.
I guess it was about almost two weeks ago that Maureen and I attended the Minnesota School Board Association Advocacy Tour, and they wanted us to think about resolutions to bring to them. So, if anybody has any suggestions, please contact Minnesota School Board Association. They are wanting to know, what are we interested in? What are our concerns as board members for our district? I thought one of the interesting things was, they looked at what a proposed excess in the budget in the state of Minnesota would be, and then they asked us what we would want to give as priorities with that money, if all of it could go towards education. And without either of us knowing it, Maureen and I chose the same things. And the first thing that we gave priority to was that we wanted to see an increase in funding for special ed to reduce across subsidy from the general fund, and then also increased funding for mental health, and then also increased funding for early childhood education. So, it was interesting. Now, tomorrow I'll be down at the Capitol for my first opportunity for a hearing, and I hope to keep learning more. But it's just all, an education for me. I'm just learning, I'm trying, and I thought it was a really good experience, and I really appreciate Maureen and how she's a mentor to me, so. I also attended the Olson PTA, and they had a very large attendance of PTA parents and some teachers. They were impressed. They didn't really have everything set up for the number they had, so they had to pull chairs in. I think that's always a good sign. They have a lot of kindergarten, first grade parents coming in that want to be a part of the PTA, and I think that's also excellent, because then you have those parents for an extended time, as they build their relationship with that school. So, it will be fun to see how they grow and develop, and I hope to attend more of those. Also, attended a ninth-grade volleyball B squad team, and it was very fun to see some familiar faces of kids I knew, and they were much littler, and see how tall they've gotten, and what great skills they've acquired. And they really were enjoying themselves. So, I see my neighbor's daughter, Kylie Pedersen, and she is, she's very graceful in what she does. She was really fun to watch. She used to pick the raspberries in my backyard, and now she's doing volleyball great, so. Yeah, and then all of us seem to participate in the Hall of Fame in athletes, and I was impressed, there was an athlete inducted into Jefferson's Hall of Fame. I don't remember the name offhand, but he had lettered twelve times, which was amazing to me. So, we have some amazing people.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
So, before school started, I went over to Valley View Middle School, because that's one of my schools, for their back-to-school night, and all the staff members were wearing these cool You Matter shirts, which I absolutely loved, and I was actually able to score one. Show it off to everyone, and just brag a little bit. So, just this You Matter on it, and all the staff wears them. And if you go there on Fridays, usually the staff is wearing them. And last week, I was wearing that at Target, and I got like, three different comments. So, it's a really nice shirt. It's, I really love the message. It really embodies our whole mantra of, you know, one Bloomington, one Minnesota, and how everyone's, you know, everyone's valued, and everyone's invited, and everyone's important. So, I think it's really good message that they put at their school. And also, I was able to make it to PTA meetings of both my schools, so into the Valley View and the Ridgeview PTA meetings. And it's always good to connect with the parents, and this is the fundraiser season, so you'll probably have some kids come to your door selling some butter braids and all the other fun stuff that we sell throughout the city, like a drooling moose or whatever. So, just be respectful, and if you can, help out and help out with this fundraiser, because all that money goes to help support our schools, which is a good thing. And also, over at Valley View, I was able to go to an after-school program. It was the first week of their Gay-Straight Alliance Club, and I just, as an ally, I wanted to go and check it out and see what's going on, and just kind of give my support to the group. And the kids were wonderful and welcoming, that they allowed me to participate in the entire hour of their group. And so, I want to thank the students that were there, and also the staff that came by to show support. It really is a good group, and I think it's a, I heard it's one of the first middle schools to have a GSA in the state, so it's nice that, to see Bloomington take a leadership role and some equity. It was really good. It's a really good group. Also, to, not this morning, this evening, we had our first BSAC meeting, which is the Board Student Advisory Council, for those that don't know. And Jackson already gave his report on it, but what I wanted to add is, when we started, I wanted all the kids to introduce themselves and say why they're here, and I thought for sure at least three of them would say, "For the free pizza." But not one of them said that. They all had really good reasons for wanting to be there. They wanted to, you know, build unity between the schools, they wanted to represent their students at their school. And at the end of the meeting, Beth and I were talking, and we were just really impressed on the energy in that group. And this is probably my fourth year in that, on that committee, and yeah, it was really a lot of energy. So, we're having some high expectations of some great things you guys are gonna do this year. And Ally was there, and she's a natural. I commented, I was like, "You're gonna be a teacher when you grow up." Because she's just really good at controlling the group and bringing them all back, so it was really fun to see. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, I have just a couple things that evidently was the beginning of school, so we had a lot of PTA. So, I had a PTA at Westwood and Popular Bridge, no, yeah, Popular Bridge. And then, I also had the PTSA council meeting, which, for people that don't know, has representatives from all of our PTAs, all of our schools, and they have a council meeting once a month, and all get together and talk, and get information from the district, and then take that back to their PT meetings in their individual schools. Also, just want to thank everyone for participating and walking in the Heritage Days Parade with our group, and passing out the books, so it was a great time, so thank you, everybody, for showing up. And I also, and on the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, so I attended that meeting. And I also had a chance over the weekend to attend the school district through the Office of Educational Equity, and the city of Bloomington partnered for a picnic on Saturday. So, I had a chance to stop by the picnic, and one of the stories I wanted to share with all of, a man that I visited with while we were eating, that told me he had many nieces and nephews in the Bloomington public schools, and how happy they all were and their family was with all of them. And he even told me that at least one of them attended a different district first, and that was not so good, he said. And so, they were very happy to be in Bloomington. So, I thought that was a nice compliment for all of our work and all of our staff, and the work that they do here, and the community for supporting the schools. So, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Fujitaki.
Great, thank you. Administration requests a motion to establish four professional development sessions for the school board. Topics for these sessions will be equity conversations. Times would be 5:30 to 6:45 PM here at the Educational Services Center in Room 601. The dates of these sessions are October 8th, January 14th, March 11th, and May 13th.
So moved. Favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, thank you.
One more topic. The district's new vision infographic is on display, Pathways to Korean College on display on the wall here in the boardroom. Three versions, one is English, one is Spanish, and the other is Somali. That concludes my report, thank you.
Is there any other business that needs to come before the board? All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.